All right, we'll go ahead and call to order the city council meeting for Monday, February 28th. Roll call, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dobi.
Here.
Councilmember Bates.
Here.
Councilmember Chirco.
Here.
Councilmember Nefolda.
Here.
Great. If you could join me and stand with me for the pledge of allegiance followed by Mayor Pro Tem Dobi will be giving the invocation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lord, I just thank you for another opportunity to gather together and make decisions that will hopefully beautifully impact this community that we endeavor to serve. I thank you that you would give us your wisdom, knowledge, understanding, and discernment, that none of us would function out of greed or self edification, but that we would ever be mindful of the people that have entrusted us to make decisions that are best for all of us as a collective. And I just pray for your wisdom for leaders in general, for all of those that are in any capacity of authority anywhere in this world, that we would all be more selfless and compassionate in our decision making, so that we would all do what's best for those that are trusting us to do what's best for the collective. And also over our first responders, and that you would continue to keep us as we come out on the other side of this pandemic. In Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. All right, the first up is we have a presentation regarding the 47th Annual Americana Awards by Howard.
Thank you so much. It is a pleasure to be here. It's fabulous to be among friends. It's evident the second that we come in here with so many people, and we've got a lot of folks here with us today, that we're amongst friends, and I'm very happy to talk to you about the Americana Awards. And you have someone here that's no stranger to the council and to this city that is our honoree this year that we'll be talking about, and he'll be talking to you in just a moment as well. I want to thank you for all the things that you've done for our students at Cypress College, our honorees. You've had more than 51 honorees. You've had hundreds of students from Los Alamos that have attended Cypress College in the past. And we give away nearly $400,000 in scholarships every year, and there are hundreds of Los Alamos students that are recipients of those scholarships and our emergency funds that we receive. We also want to thank the Los Alamos City Committee with Johnny Strohmeyer and Marilyn Poe and others that have helped us for so many years and continue to bring us incredible honorees for the Americana Awards. Well, you can see here from this picture up here, you've had some other notable people. Last year with Bill Poe was your honoree. I always say last year, but it was in 2020, in 2020. And this year, of course, we're recognizing Troy Edgar and along with our Man of the Year, Chief Brian Fennessey from Orange County Fire. Here's a short video.
Hi there, I'm Troy Edgar. I'm the 2022 recipient of the Americana Awards from the City of Los Alamos. I want to welcome everybody and invite you to come down to the Americana Awards on March 26th.
Well, it's short. You get the idea. Thankfully Troy's here, so it'll be even easier. There's your whole cohort of honorees for this year for the Americana Awards. And, you know, as I said, Troy is no stranger to you here today. He has this incredible list of accomplishments, not only professionally, but also throughout the community, whether he's working with the Casa Youth Shelter, or he's working with St. Isadora, with the Orange County Sanitation Board. There are so many things I could list, but guess what? You're going to have to come to the Americana Awards to hear the whole video and to hear his whole story. But thankfully, I have Troy with me here today. And Troy, do you want to say a couple things?
First of all, it's an honor to be here and to see the mayor and the city council. Thank you guys so much for always just being so supportive. You know, it's like a little bit of a deja vu coming here and being on this side of the podium. I don't know if I've ever been on this side. But yeah, it doesn't seem as bad as I thought it would be. You know what? Just for the Americana Award, so a little bit, you know, being on the council 2006 to 2018, every single year they had the Americana Awards. And I would say that within the community, I still have to pinch myself to believe that I actually am the nominee. You know, with up there with Marilyn Poe, Johnny Strohmeyer, Kenny Brandyberry, the names go on. It's just a real honor. A little bit about Cypress College, I'm super excited about this. You know, just remember, it's Americana Citizen of the Year, but it's really for a great cause for our city, our community, and this part of North Orange County. You know, we do a lot of, through this fundraising, we support a lot of kids that go there. I think all of us, I know in my family, all three of my boys went to Cypress College for a stint. And probably very personal to me is my wife, when she came over from Iran and got into the US, she, this is where she stopped and learned English. So she's now a school teacher in the Garden Grove Unified School District because of Cypress College. So this place is very important to our family. I think it's very important to the community. I'm just honored to be here and honored to be up here. And Mark Chirco, if you're out there, I'm just surprised that you're not here. I give you a little bit of a hard time. The USC UCLA thing doesn't go that deep, so I hope to see you guys later. If I could, yeah, invite everybody. Yeah, I would invite everybody, if you can, please come and join me at the Americana Awards. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And you can see why it's so incredible to have Troy this year as our honoree and Citizen of the Year. We hope that you'll come out and join us and support us. You can see it's going to be on March 26th at the Disneyland Hotel. We are so happy to be in person this year and to have you join us for this formal event. We have an incredible opportunity drawing, like we do every year. We have two electric bicycles and prizes worth up to $10,000 from a number of different sponsors. So please join us in helping to raise money through that and all of our efforts. You can go to AmericanaAwards.org to get all of the information as well. And I just want to, I also wanted to mention, we've got a few other people here tonight. We've got Beth Pyburn, who's on our Board of Directors. She's also probably no stranger to you. And Rachel Gattacar, who's our Director of Development for the foundation. So you see their faces around a lot. And we appreciate everybody coming out to support us, and we look forward to seeing you at the Americana Awards. Thank you.
And we do want a picture. Colleagues, can you join me down at the front? And we're going to take a picture with our honoree.
But you can't see it.
So we are all looking forward to the tribute to Troy Edgar on March 26th, and a roast will be following after the tribute. Should be fun. Okay, at this time, oral communications, any individual in the audience may come forward to speak on any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Remarks are to be limited to not more than five minutes per speaker. Do I have any speakers? Seeing none, I will bring it back to council and council announcements.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just to confirm, this is a, we are allowing video participation, and we do not have any participants online at the moment.
Thank you. Let's see, so we're going to bring it back to council announcements. Mark, since you're not here to defend yourself, you're up first.
Okay, thank you. And again, my apologies for not being there in person. I'm on the East Coast for work. That could not be avoided this week, unfortunately. But I attended since the last meeting, the Budget Standing Committee meeting with Mayor Hasselbrink, where we talked about the financial update for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 and preliminary results for '21 and '22. We talked about the Section 115 trust, you know, new tool that the city has for calculating our pension liabilities and different pay down options for that. And we also had a special meeting on February 7th regarding redrawing lines for districting, which we'll talk about further tonight. Otherwise, traveled for work and a nice family vacation to Hawaii kept me pretty busy in the last month. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bates, you're up.
Just a couple of things. First, with regard to the library, we're seeing continual improvements at the library, where now games, Zoom stories, online stories and education can be accessed from your home through the library website. So for those parents that are looking for good interaction for the kids, you can actually go there and play games at the library with your children. So would strongly suggest that you think about options using the library for entertainment. Second, Orange County Sanitation District, very big, complex operation. We're looking at a lot of different projects. The major one that will impact the city, of course, is the new sewer system, or not new, replacement sewer system going down Los Alamos Boulevard. The district will do everything they can to make sure we stay very informed as to when the work crews will be out in the field. As a last point, I was active with the Finance Committee of the League of California City. And the four major priorities that the league will be working on this year is, one, continued effort to improve the availability of housing, primarily for the homeless, but certainly housing in general, some of which we're supportive of. Other options where they ignore local requirements and local standards, we will continue to fight and do our best to oppose those kind of restrictions. The state's going to be very involved with infrastructure and the feds this year. Obviously, disaster preparedness with all the wildfires and climate change is another big issue for the League of California Cities. So those are some issues that we'll be dealing with as cities through our State League of California Cities. Thank you, Mayor.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Nefolda.
Thanks. Thanks for not having me go after.
You've got to pass for a year.
I'm going to hold you to that. Been a quiet month, no activities to report. I've had no events or meetings since our last, our special meeting earlier in the month. So, thank you.
Well, that was boring. All right, Mayor Pro Tem Dobi, can you?
Don't ever be absent, because I'mma call you.
You're up.
Alrighty. So I have my Mosquito and Vectors Committee meetings that I've gone to, and they have their open house. All of our meetings are still virtual. I think it's because there are just so many committee members that they don't have a space big enough for all of us to even have elbow room. So. But I would like to share something. First of all, their website, and we have a link from our website to their website, if you are interested in additional information on the ankle biter mosquitoes, that's their nickname, but they're also called 80s mosquitoes. If you want information like the tip and toss, which is don't leave any standing water, these rascals, I've shared it with you before, but maybe somebody's listening that's never heard this, their eggs can lie dormant for years, and then a drop of water, like on gremlins, will cause them to hatch, and then they can live. And they bite you multiple times. These are the definition of Diablo mosquitoes, because that's why you see you have a bunch of bites in one spot. It's just one mosquito that continues to bite you. Now, I have a little concoction that I made up that I will share with you, that it helps to stop them from biting, and then it also provides a lot of relief. Get a little spray bottle, has to be about this big, and then it's equal parts. I found the stuff at like a Ross or Marshall's. It's a CBD oil, eucalyptus oil, spearmint, and lavender. Some of those smells they hate, others of them they're repulsed by, but at any rate, it works. I've actually made it for other people. Just try it. Then I had my Human Relations Committee meetings, and then I would like to shout out our development team for continuing to care for our city, even when they are down to just three people, which is what I believe they were during the holidays. They were still out there taking care of things, trying to address the potholes just as quickly as they could. I saw just one guy out there by himself trying to fix potholes, and I'm very grateful. And then also our code enforcement rock stars, from the bottom of my heart, thank you. I appreciate your work in keeping our streets and our city up to code. And the last thing I'd like to share is Paul's Place, or their hamburgers. If you like the taste of flame broil, which I do, Paul's Place. And that's all I got. Thank you. See, I'm not going to go that far, but they are good.
All right, I attended the Leif Gala, the Los Alamos Education Foundation, a few weeks ago. They obviously haven't had it for a couple of years. This year, they honored Dave Aplin, who has been very instrumental in the football program. Just to give you a sense of how long he's been involved, he now has great grandchildren in the school district, and he is still involved with the football program. So it's a great night. They're focusing on raising money to create a wellness center in the high school, both an inside and outside garden, to also provide onsite counseling and just various areas for quiet time and just kind of a wellness, more of a mental wellness type thing, which is definitely needed, especially after what those school kids have gone through for the past couple of years. I was able to emcee the Los Alamos Youth Baseball Opening Day. It's their 59th year, playing over at Joint Forces Training Base. 600 kids, ages four to 14, and that was always a lot of fun. I was a little disconcerted that some of my kids' friends had kids there now playing, but that was okay. Regarding Orange County Fire Authority, I'd like to congratulate Michelle Stagel, the current mayor of La Palma. She is our new OCFA Board Chair, and she's going to do a phenomenal job. And then I wanted to, a couple reminders, remind everybody of the event coming up, Good Morning Los Alamos. It's like Good Morning America, only better. We get the chance to listen to our esteemed city manager talk about all city things. That's on Wednesday, March 9th, at 8:15 at the Community Center. Breakfast is $10, I believe. And then also, the Weekend of Art is coming up, March 18th and 19th. It's for visual arts and performance arts, so dust off the tutus and the paintbrushes, and go ahead and submit. The applications are on our website. It's a really neat thing to see the kids perform. Some of the artwork is just mind blowing. We've got some unbelievable artists in the city and also on staff with Tom Oliver and all of his creations. So that was it for me, and now we'll move to items from the city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one item that I wanted to mention. Yes, I will be doing the Good Morning Los Al, but our newly installed Chief of Police will be doing a show and tell at the Chamber of Commerce on Friday morning at 7:30 at Maderas. So I hope everyone will be able to come along and help me heckle him and welcome him to the city in a proper way.
Okay, and we're going to go ahead, we can go ahead and do warrants now. We still have some time. So go ahead, move to the warrants. Can I get a motion to approve the warrants?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, and roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Questions?
I'm sorry.
Yeah, how about, so can we take a look at, on page three, at the bottom there? It's a small charge. It's the $26 for special classes. And I was just wondering what that first special class was for?
I'm going to ask our director to answer that, but I did want to mention something about the senior fitness, which actually, now that I'm thinking about it, Emily, if you wouldn't mind mentioning that as well. Thank you.
Good evening. The Silver Senior Fitness Class is an exercise class. Unfortunately, that particular instructor has actually left the contract that she is doing with the city as she has opened her own studio. However, we are always actively recruiting for instructors for that type of class, especially we have a new senior needs assessment, so we're asking the community to provide us feedback in terms of classes that they'd be interested in partaking in.
Sure. Emily, my question was a little bit more general, in that a lot of health programs, once people, I believe it's reach either 60 or 65, can sign up as part of their health program for what's called silver sneakers. That's why I noticed the silver on there, and it got my attention. I'm wondering if we have checked to see if we can provide that benefit to any of our seniors that are involved with any of our programs that could be involved, and we could get, you know, credit, because the health plan pays the city, or in this case, we've used it at the Jewish Center in Long Beach, pays the Jewish Center when we participate in a class there. So that was my question, to see whether or not we could participate in that program.
We can definitely look into that.
Okay, thank you. On page five, one question there about, it has to do with transparency there in about the middle of the page.
Right, sir. This is the Contract for Open Gov. It's a service that the city has used since 2015. And essentially, what it is, is that it allows for people that aren't well versed in budgetary documents to be able to go and take a look at the city's budget and ask very simple questions and get really finite answers as to, how much money do we spend on park maintenance? How much money do we spend on fleets? How much money are we putting towards the repair of playground equipment and such? And it really just provides an easy access point, and we, it is part of our transparency efforts that we go through with the state and the, I'm sorry, I always get the acronym wrong, but it's the International Council of Government Financial Officers?
CSMFO.
Yes. And essentially, it's part of our audit process. And there's always a comment of, what have you done in order to try to make your budgetary process more transparent? So that's what that tool does.
Got it. Last question, Mr. Mayor, Madam Mayor. On page nine, I don't mind sending a lot of money in Long Beach's direction, but I think it'd probably help if we knew what it was for. I'm assuming that's the animal contract, but it'd be nice if it said it.
You are correct, sir. That is the quarterly payment for the animals control services, and we'll make a note of that, that we can write animal control in there for the next go around.
Okay. Chad, based on the Open Gov, we've had that for a few years. I know Jason brought it in, and I know it was presented to us. It's a really cool tool. Do you think maybe at one of our, maybe our first budget meeting or something, as a full council, we could give a little tutorial?
Of course. That'd be a great idea.
It's a really cool.
And I know that the finance team has been working to update them, update the different questions and make it more applicable to today. So I think that actually, this is a great time to do kind of a reintroduction of what it actually does.
Okay, great. Any other questions on the warrants? Perfect. Okay, roll call vote, please.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bates, seconded by Councilmember Dobi, to approve the warrants. Roll call, Mayor Hasselbrink.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Dobi.
Yes.
Councilmember Bates.
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco.
Yes.
Councilmember Nefolda.
Yes.
Okay, we have a couple more minutes. We need to start the public hearing right at 6:30, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Do we want to start with the consent calendar? Should we just?
We only have three minutes, and we do have to start right on time, so.
Okay. We're going to take a three minute break, talk amongst yourself, and then we'll come back at 6:30 for the public hearing. We're going to reconvene to the public hearing. This is public hearing number three to receive input on the draft revised city council district boundaries. City Clerk, you're up.
Thank you. So as you mentioned, this is our third of four public hearings. The purpose of this hearing is to review and discuss the draft maps and the proposed districts that have submitted by the members of the community and our consultant, NDC. The focus is on the specific boundaries of these draft maps. Draft maps were posted on the city's website on February 21st, and to our social media, letting the community know that those were available. We received one map from the public, and NDC has created three different maps for us to review today. And then based on tonight's comments, we will have, NDC will refine the proposed maps for final consideration during the fourth public hearing on March 7th. So tonight, you're really just providing feedback about the things you like and you don't like, any changes that you would like to see in the future. We are not selecting our final map today. We will select our final map at the March 7th special meeting, and it will be adopted at the March 21st regular meeting. And with that, I'll turn it over to Justin from NDC, and he'll walk us through the maps and the different options.
Thank you, Mayor Hasselbrink, members of the council, and members of the community. It's a pleasure to be here tonight to present on the draft maps. Just to kind of give us a review of where we've been and where we're going, right now, we're kind of at the midpoint of this process. We've had two public hearings, January 18th and February 7th, to take feedback and input that we use to create the draft maps. We also created a series of web tools that people could use to submit draft maps. We've had, this is our kind of first time, we're going to be reviewing the different draft map options. Following this, we're going to have an opportunity to, for people to revise or resubmit later this week. And the next Monday, we have our next public hearing to select the final draft map. Then that will be then approved and be in effect for the next 10 years, for the next five election cycles. And so that is really kind of our process. We're working toward our end date of April 17th, which is the state's deadline for cities to adopt district maps. Just to kind of give us the criteria, these are factors that we should be considering when we look at our different draft map options. First, equal population. The plan has to be population balanced. That means that the difference in population between the largest and smallest district can be no greater than 10% of, you know, of the single district. And so, all of the maps that you'll see are going to be, meet that criteria, although our current map does not. Our current map is above that 10% threshold. In addition, we've looked at the Voting Rights Act, although race cannot be the only factor, or even the predominant factor in the selection of a map, we have to consider the needs of protected class communities. Each of these maps has one district, District One, that has a larger Latino population than any of the other districts, concentrated in Old Town Los Alamos, mostly in Old Town West, but also a little bit in the couple of blocks of Old Town East that are populated. So we've kept those neighborhoods together in all of the maps. Where we really want to spend the bulk of our time tonight and throughout the process is this middle column. These are the criteria laid out by the Fair Maps Act, and they must be considered in this ranked order. Contiguity is the first principle. All parts of a district must touch, must be one solid boundary around the entire district. That is something that all of the maps we are looking at today comply with. It says nothing about being able to specifically drive across a district, and so some areas like Parkwood, actually you've crossed the base in order to connect to any other part of the city. That's something that we have to do in order to connect it, but it's still considered contiguous if it's linked with geographically adjacent neighborhoods. Undivided neighborhoods and communities of interest. This is where we really want to spend the majority of our time, because we've identified, and the city has identified, many different neighborhoods and communities throughout the city. And one of the neighborhoods in particular, Apartment Row, is so large that it actually has population for more than one district. And it must be divided across different districts, and in order to keep districts contiguous, it has to be divided several times. And so that's going to be something that we want to consider. What's the best way to divide Apartment Row? Each of the maps we're looking at today divides it in a different way. Easily identifiable boundaries, you know, in a city as small as Los Alamos, this is a little bit tricky. But to the extent that we can use clearer boundaries, Los Alamos Boulevard, for example, Cotella, we should strive to do so, rather than looking at alleyways or kind of odd boundaries that would put people on different sides of the same street, and especially in the same neighborhood, into different districts. And compactness. The law defines compactness as not bypassing one group of people to get to a more distant group of people. And so what does that mean for us? Well, we can look at a map and say, the boundaries kind of look weird, but we are going to end up with some odd boundaries, I think, because of the needs of the first criteria in this rank order. Because of equal population, there are some times where you're looking at blocks and you're saying, I'd love to move this block in. saying, I'd love to move this block in, but that block is too big. Especially in Apartment Row, we have single census blocks with 300 or 400 people in them. That's 25% of a district's population right there. And so we have this real issue, especially in Apartment Row with very big blocks and sometimes swapping or trading a block, you may end up not ending up with maps that exceed that 10% deviation. And so that's something that we really want to consider as we're looking at the maps, that we have to have a map at the end of the day that meets the federal requirement of equal population. Finally, in the third column, these are other factors we can consider after we've considered the Fair Maps Act and federal requirements, such as, for example, not, you know, not moving people from one election year to another, taking into account future population growth by underpopulating areas that we think will grow more over the next decade. And also respecting voters' choices, the idea that the members of the community have elected a council and it should be up to the community to decide whether members continue, not depend on the map. And so we have to present here tonight four different draft maps, a community map and three NDC drawn revisions that bring our population deviation down from where it is now, at about 30%, down to where it needs to be, under 10%. We also have these available online. It's an interactive web viewer that lets you search for addresses, zoom in and out, and really compare and see detail on the map. You can even search for businesses if you're interested in where a commercial site is located. Our community map, which we present first, the black lines, the thick black lines represent the current city council districts. The colored areas represent how they would make changes to those areas. And so this is a community map. Some of the big changes that you would see in this map is that the military base is actually divided in this map. Part of it would go to four, part of it would be in District, or remain in District Five, or move to District Five, sorry. In addition, we would also see some major revisions to Apartment Row. It would draw an entire district, District Three and Two Apartment Row. And it would unite sort of the neighborhoods along the western end of the city. So Rossmore Highlands, Suburbia, Old Town, or Old Dutch Haven, together with a portion of the military base in order to get their population numbers up to what they need. One of the common things you'll see is that there's a couple of blocks north of where District One currently ends, just on the east side of Los Alamos Boulevard. Those are where those new commercial buildings, like the hotel, the Marriott, has gone in. And that's something you'll see in this map and a couple of other maps. And that'll be a question we want to ask, is that Los Alamos Boulevard business corridor, does it make sense how it's divided now, or does it make sense to change that? There's no population in either of those blocks. NDC Map One kind of represents our view of what a least changes or minimal changes map could be. District One, we keep the same because it's the one district that currently meets the population deviation requirement. We keep the general feel of the districts. We add population to District Five by uniting the military, by uniting Rossmore Highlands and Suburbia, Old Dutch Haven. District Five grows by one block into Apartment Row. And District Three does shrink, because District Three in all of these maps has to shrink to some degree. It's the overpopulated district driving that population deviation. And so in this map, it shrinks to kind of the south-central portion of Apartment Row, north of the base, but kind of a very rectangular area within Apartment Row. NDC Map Two kind of explores something similar to what we saw in the community map. We wanted to give you options with Parkwood. And particularly, Parkwood doesn't have a ton of population now, but we know that there is development slated for Parkwood over the course of the next decade. We want to give you options like NDC One that keep it with Rossmore Highlands. And we want to give you options like NDC Two that move it to, with Carrier Row and New Dutch Haven. And so that's what this map does. It creates a, you know, it creates a military sort of eastern and southeastern Los Alamos district and moves District, and moves District Five as a primarily western corridor along Los Alamos Boulevard now. This one makes some small changes to District One. It loses one block at the south end of the district, just north of, basically where the Vons is. And it gains a one block on the north end of it, the district, right across from Cotella, kind of east of where the current district is. District Three also then becomes a district entirely within Apartment Row, but this one is kind of more of a central district. It almost looks, I know it looks a little bit like a plus-nine or a cross, because it keeps all the areas kind of along, I believe that's Lexington, together. And then kind of the areas adjacent to it, east and west. District Two then comes in along the eastern end of Apartment Row rather than through the center. Yeah.
So, oh, you said that the black, the thick black lines are what are existing?
Yes. The thick black line is the current district and the color is the proposed district. And then in our third map, we looked at, again, trying to kind of create more of a square or more of a rectangular District Three in the central part of Apartment Row, really trying to increase the compactness and try to avoid, one of the problems in Apartment Row is that sometimes the alleyways serve as block boundaries and sometimes they don't. And so sometimes you have these blocks in Apartment Row that actually have 400 or 500 people in them even, and they become very hard to work around. But we were trying to create more of a Apartment Row-centered district somewhere in the city, if possible, to comply with the Fair Maps Act. And so this one just makes the minor changes of moving those two blocks north, like we said, where the Marriott is and the Genal Lumber Yard, into District One. And there's no population there, but there, you know, at least there was none counted in 20, in 2020. But I don't even know if the hotel was open at that point. And there may be population counted there now that wasn't counted then. And so this one keeps District Five more or less unchanged, takes District, or, sorry, District Four more or less unchanged. And District One, again, is also more or less unchanged. But Districts Two and Three get a much more balanced division, where District Two takes in both blocks kind of immediately south of it across Cotella at the north end of Apartment Row. And District Three really becomes that central Apartment Row area. And so these are the maps that we have to present to you tonight. We're happy to take any feedback on the maps, present any revisions to them next week. Hopefully, these are just a starting point for our conversation and we're happy to look at adjustments. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Being a public hearing, we're going to go ahead and open up the public hearing to receive public input on the district boundaries. So if we have any public comment? Don't be shy. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Frank Marchese. I live on Howard Avenue by the military base. And I just want to say a few things. First thing I wanted to say was thank you for invoking the Lord's name over this meeting. I really appreciate that. That's wonderful. The second thing is, is I want to say is the police department in this city is the best. I mean, I walk this city every morning for about an hour before the sunlight comes up. And I have called the police about things that were suspicious on my phone, and they came out within a minute and took care of the problem. So I just want to give a big thank you to you guys. I always brag about you people. The police department in this city is the best. I grew up in Long Beach, and I was born in Long Beach, and I used to always call the cops when I saw something. It took them 30 minutes to get there and the bad guys were gone. You know what I mean? And it was very frustrating. So I just want to thank you for being so, my wife one time called the police, she hadn't even disconnected the phone, and she heard the siren coming down Cotella. And we laughed about it. It was great. You guys are great. And that's one of the things I love about this city. It's so small. It's merely two major streets. I know everybody. I used to have coffee with the mayor, Murphy, all the time. He would tell me what was going on in the city. It was like Andy Mayberry of the city, because he would tell me, you know, what was going on. And we would have coffee and he would tell me all the time. And I was always very nice to Murphy. I was, I'm glad you're Mrs. Hasselbrink, you're great. But I mean, Murphy was great. I had coffee with him all the time. He would tell me about things that were going on. I loved him. He moved and I was broken-hearted when he moved, because I used to love to see him. My dad was a city official in Long Beach, the head of the building department. My dad built the Breakwater. My dad did a lot of work in that city, built a lot of things. My father, the engineer, and I worked in construction. I love this little city and I just think that, I hope you guys do the good things here, because it's such a great little town. And everybody knows everybody. I walk the city in the morning, I pick up trash, I clean up graffiti when I see it. I'm always calling the police when I see problems and it's just a great city. So just keep up the great work. And I mean, I just, it's a wonderful city. Really, that's all I can say. Just keep it up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. All right, I see we have another speaker. O'Kano?
Oops, sorry, I'm a little short here. I was just wanted to, I was a little confused with the maps on the link with the agenda. I was having a hard time following like the Map One. So I don't know if, because there's more than one Map One on with the agenda. So I'm not sure if someone could like explain the difference between the two, which Map One were we looking at that was up here?
Of course. And maybe I can help with that. So through this process, there's the ability for members of the public to submit maps. So I think the, what you're referring to is, we do have one map that was submitted by the public and that's labeled Public Map Number One. And then, I'm sorry, the second map, which is, again, Map Number One, but is also labeled as.
NDC.
NDC. So, and that was developed by our consultant in order to make sure that it fit all the rules.
Okay, awesome. Okay, well, I was looking at the maps here and I see that, yeah, definitely Apartment Row. It's, you know, we live over there in Carrier Row, so it definitely is a little challenging with Apartment Row splitting it up that, you know, that many, so, you know, so much. So I'm here just to see some, hear some of your feedback on the maps and kind of get a sense of what you're all thinking. Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have another?
Mayor, if we can, for the record, may you please state your name?
Maggie Marchese.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we have another speaker? Come on up.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Good evening, council members. My name is Shane Smith. I live on Noel Street. I submitted the public map and I wanted to identify myself so that it wasn't the public anonymous submittal. I heard the first meeting where you all discussed the inputs that you wanted to get from the public and I was, I was moved to participate as a citizen of this city. I've lived here 25 years, going on 30 now, in the same place. And I've seen, as we say, administrations come and go, and some better than others. And I thought this was a very appropriate time since we're going to be redistricting for the next decade. I figured it would be worthwhile for me to put in my opinion, to try to help the city in my way, to have a better district system for the next 10 years. Not knowing the inputs that were going to be provided by the consultant, other than just the general information he provided in the first two meetings that I watched remotely, I decided I would go out and try to make an effort to put out a map. And because he spoke so highly of MAP, was it called, the tool that you use, sir, is called?
MapTitude.
MapTitude, yes. I presumed, since he said it was the best one, that we were all going to be allowed to use that. And I went and found out, of course not. In order to use that tool with all the demographic material that he has, the socioeconomic data that he uses, I would have had to provide a $4,000 license fee as an independent user to reach that information. So I was a little disappointed when I learned that I would have to use a tool that was good. I did use Dave's redistricting application and I communicated with them about it. And they said, well, if you're using your demographic data, socioeconomic data, maybe we can request it and have it ready for the next time. But his tool was primarily about voter preference and voter habits and the demographic data of the voters themselves, without the monetary or the apartment, multifamily, single-family economic data that I consider to be much more important. In a city this small, we are all pretty much in the same neighborhood. I'm sorry. I can walk through three districts in three minutes. I walk to, pardon me, I walk to my mechanic to pick up my car and I walk through three districts. And it takes me 20 minutes. I don't consider that to be a big deal. And the demographic doesn't change that much. The, as they say, when you're not the lead dog, the view doesn't change much. So just, we're all pretty much the same here, a little bit more, a little bit less. But there is a distinct amount of, let's say, economic inequality. There are people who rent, who make a modest living. There are people that live very well and own their own homes. And these are islands, pretty much in these districts, that are untouchable. Our consultant mentioned several of the neighborhoods in District One, Old Town, in Carrier Row in District Four, Rossmore Highlands in District Five, and then Apartment Row, which is now being broken up, because there's so many people living there, which is great. But if they all have the same affinity, the same interests, then their interests need to be preserved as much as possible. And that was the intention behind my map, to try to make sure that the majority people who don't have all the money have a voice in this council, represented by you fine people, in an appropriate way. And so I'm more than happy to participate in this process, but I felt it was necessary to come forward and at least identify myself and explain why I did what I did and how I was limited by the fact that the consultant data was much better than mine. I had to kind of borrow some of the information from his economic sheet that he presented at the first meeting to try to approximate what I was trying to find out about the layout of the city. I've lived in it for 25 years, but I didn't really know all this. All this information just is, it's a treasure trove, but I felt like I was kind of limited in my effort. But I did my best and I submitted it and it actually allowed him to play off of it, which to me is a good thing. It's a different perspective. Yes, it does touch more boundaries, it makes more changes, but that's necessary. And I thought, as long as we're going to, you know, start fresh with a new district system, with a new census, why not move a few rules, bend a few rules, but don't hurt anybody and don't break any rules? And that was my approach. So, thank you for your indulgence. Thank you for listening.
Thank you very much. Thank you. And I appreciate you taking the time. I know this wasn't a five-minute project. This was quite a task, so I appreciate the input that we can always get from the public. Do I have any more public comments? Mr. Boyer, come on up.
Good evening, council. It's nice to be back in this chamber without masks. I'm representing the chamber tonight, Commerce. Just wanted to come and say welcome to the Chief of Police. And those of you that don't know, we're having a chamber breakfast this Friday and he will be our guest speaker. He's going to be over in Rossmore Park. So need more information, call the chamber. And we just want to get the word out, we want to thank the city for the shop local, eat local, play local, stay local, and support local. And so appreciate all that you do, the endless hours you do, and the thankless emails and job you are doing. And thank you. And I don't envy you on your redistricting. God bless you and everyone have a great evening. And please come and have some fun this, we're looking forward to this Friday. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so I'll close, go ahead and close the public hearing and we'll bring it back.
Mayor?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I apologize. If I could, please, could we confirm with the clerk that no one on the teleconference would like to speak on this item?
That's correct. We have no one participating via teleconference at this time.
I knew that. It's okay. Okay, now we will bring it back to council. And Mr. Bates, you have some questions?
Yes. Just a couple of questions. I think of the maps you put forward, the one that seems to have a certain amount of appeal is your appeal is your map three. And the reason I say that is I think it keeps a lot of the districts fairly contiguous. I mean, four is picking up some of Apartment Row. Of course, the majority of Apartment Row is in District Three. District Two, the district I'm in, picks up the northern street, the north side of, I believe that's Green Street in Apartment Row. And I guess my question to add to that, and you were talking about this earlier in terms of how the ethnicity works out. The distance over to the Long Beach side, to Marne and Lilly, you know, is about the same from the first district as it is from the second district. You still have to cross down Ball and come in the backside into Long Beach. So I guess my question is, why or has that area been considered for inclusion in another district? Because there's no evidence in any of the maps that that was taken into consideration where you look at, especially Lilly and Marne also. You see where I'm talking about? It's in Long Beach. Well, technically it's in Los Alamos, but it's a part of what's normally considered Long Beach.
Well, you know, I mean, with District Two, we felt that there was, you know, there, there is a sizable Asian community in the northern section of District Two.
Right.
And we felt that it was important to keep that community together and in a separate district, because actually there's too many people in that neighborhood, of course. You can't combine it with District One north of Cotella because there's too many people there. So we felt that it was important to distinguish between east and west of Los Alamos Boulevard in the north end of the city.
Why?
Well, first of all, because if you just had a district north of Cotella, you'd have too many people.
Right, agree. No, I'm saying, you're, you're missing my point here. Okay, instead of using the dividing line as Cotella or Cerritos, what about using the dividing line as Ball? Okay? Because the only way you access on the other side of the channel going through there to get to those two streets, Lilly and Marne, is to go up, cross over on Ball and come in the back way through Long Beach to get to those two streets in Los Alamos. Okay? That's my point. I don't think you looked at it or considered it very well in terms of the impact it would have for District One and District Two and whether it'd help you in the overall demographics and balancing out those districts. And I hope between now and next, the next meeting, you'll take a look at that.
Okay. Okay.
You're not going to see it from any of your maps. There are not enough detail, Justin. They, they, you gotta, you gotta bring them up so we've got some more detail.
I'm not sure exactly which
I know.
area you're talking about.
I know. That's the problem. You want to take it. I don't know if you can help it.
I'm happy to.
So essentially what, Councilman, please correct me if I'm, if I'm missing it, is that there is a, on the far side, or I'll call it the east side of town, I'm sorry, the far west side of town.
Correct.
There is a section that is across the storm drain channel that accounts for, if, if you were driving past it, you would think it's in Long Beach, but obviously it's in Los Alamos. I think what the councilman is, is getting at is that if you were to draw a line connecting two and connect more of the northern portion of the city, that you could tie into that section as opposed to making it part of what is now District One. I think that, I don't know what exactly the population ramifications of looking at that might be.
Mostly single family, but a number of single family units with a lot of people in them. There used to be, there used to be residents over there where I could count eight voters in one household. So, and I've been involved in the city for about 44 years now, so I kind of understand the voting areas when we were all together.
Would that be what the city calls bungalows on the planning map?
No, no. You're wrong area. Not close.
I think probably what the, I think the answer that the council member is looking for is that, yes, we can look into what exactly that demographic shift would look like if we were to put it on a map. And I think, I think I've seen the answer.
And if you have specific, and we have, if you give the specific streets in the record, we can definitely
Yeah, I'd just like you to take a look at the data and the streets a little bit better and come up with some better options. That's all I'm saying.
We also have to see where the block boundaries are and where, if those are in a separate
You needed to drive over there and look at it, Justin. That's what I'm telling you. Okay? As nicely as I can.
Okay. We also, we also do have to make, see what the, what the census geography looks like in that area, too.
Gotcha.
But we can certainly look it up.
Anything else?
Yeah, good, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yep.
Okay.
And for the record, I like the Unicorn Street in District One. It gives me hope that there is a house that I will be able to move into because there are no houses available in District One. So I'm just going to throw that out there again. But my questions are, how are the industrial spaces accounted for? Because there's so many of them in our very tiny city. How does that play into how you
Yeah. And one of the trouble, not trouble, but just one of the census realities is that even though a lot of them are zero population, a lot of them are single census blocks. Like, for example, it's not just the hospital in a single census block by itself, but everything all the way up to, you know, Spring Street is basically in one census block. It's almost, you know, it's almost a perfect square, quarter mile or half mile by half mile. And so one of the things we, we do is we have to decide how to, where to place those blocks. The census only places block boundaries if they see a street that actually fully divides that area off from other areas or some other natural feature like a river or, you know, something they see on the ground on an aerial photograph. And so what that means is that a lot of the, there's a lot of very big blocks in the city, especially in the north part of the city. And we have, you know, we have not subdivided any blocks because that runs into a lot of potential legal risk. So they have, you know, there are some, you know, you know, I think I would say a lot of that ends up in District Two because that's where a lot of that comes, you know, naturally in. And to keep District Two contiguous, to keep the northern areas contiguous with the southern areas, we have to go through the, some of those industrial areas.
Okay. Thank you. And then I'm going to assume the answer is yes, but I'm not going to assume. The new developments that are coming into District One, like they've got all of those new, I guess I'd call them townhome areas or really nice apartments. I'm not sure what they classify them as. I'm going to call them townhomes, but I assume that all of these maps take that into consideration because there's quite a bit of development happening.
Yes. And so right now District One is actually under by about a percentage and a half. And so that allows District One some room to grow over the next decade.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Councilman Nofolda, any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. Councilman Rurczeko, do you have any questions?
Yeah, just a couple. Justin, one question I have is the effect on voters in terms of the different maps and which, if any of the maps, will result in a significant number of our residents missing out on an election cycle. So somebody who, for example, voted in 2018 and they're scheduled to vote this year, but because of a shift, they're going to lose their right to vote until 2024 and go six years. And I'm sure there's other similar iterations of that. Was that factored in at all? I know it can't be completely avoided, but obviously we don't want to eliminate our voters' right to, to vote every four years. They used to vote every two years before we went to districts. And obviously shifting from two to four to six years would be pretty frustrating if I were one of those voters.
Absolutely. And I think it is something that we definitely took into account to the extent we could. And I think, you know, I, you know, being honest, District Three is the one that changes the most in all, all of the maps. And I think it's in no small part because of where it is in the city. But certainly particularly, I believe, four and five are up this, this November. We took that specifically into account with those two seats, trying not to shift voters out of those districts to the extent we could.
Okay. Okay, that's all the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Okay. And I just had just a clarifying question. Public Map One and NDC Map Two are very similar. And I'll look at NDC Map Two. I noticed that the south side of Howard would be in District Four, but the north side of Howard across the street would be in District Two. Am I reading that right?
I believe so.
So across the street neighbors are going to be in different districts.
And it might be a good reason to reject number two if that's not a map that you are interested in.
Right. And I, and I noticed the same thing in the public map, too. It's, it affects Green. So the north side of Green is in District Four and the south side of Green is in District Two, but they live across the street from each other.
And I tell you, it's entirely for population balancing.
Right, oh sure.
But if that's not something that works, then that's something we can eliminate.
Right. I just wanted to make sure I understood it as I'm looking at the different maps, so, okay.
But you're going to, you're going to have that in any of the maps, really. I mean, if you look at Map Three, you've got, if I'm reading it correctly as well, one part of Green is within District Two and then opposite side of the street is partially in District Four, partially in District Three, and then the westernmost part, the entire street is District One then, right?
So we, if we go to Map Three, this is, we can do that here. If we go to Map Three, actually, you know, we follow Green almost all the way across until we hit the District One boundary. So we are following the street there. This is actually a trade-off that some people talk about. Sometimes people say the alleyway is better because the people who are on both sides of the street facing each other are in the same district. It's easier to precinct, it's easier to walk. But again, that might be not, not, not the right thing for Los Alamos. And so Map Three does, it follows Green all the way to District One. And District One just has all of the streets that border Los Alamos Boulevard.
Right. And then also on District Map Three, Farquhar is in a different district, but they don't have across the street neighbors.
That's right. And Farquhar is also a community boundary between, on the planning map.
Right. Okay. Okay, that's, I just wanted to make sure that I was reading that right, so. Any questions? Any input of what we want to see next? Any revisions to this? I know you had your revision up in the northern part. Is there, I don't even know how to do this, on the maps that have the little fingers that divide Howard or, and/or Green into separate districts across street from each other, is there any way we could maybe use the east-west as the dividing line and keep those blocks together? That's the million dollar question, but
Yeah, you know, there's a little bit of a trade-off in that a lot of times, you know, like I said, these population numbers are huge in Apartment Row. There were times where I tried to go all the way, you know, make sure, follow that road, and it goes from a deviation of under by four and a half percent to over by six and a half percent. It just one census block shifting. And we can certainly look and try to make revisions to do this and could take that direction, come back with a map, you know, re-approved map. But there, there are, we are limited by that 10% deviation.
Sure. Yeah, I would just like to see if we could, if we have to split up a block, use like Noel or one of those streets as opposed to, because somebody that lives across the street from each other on Noel probably isn't in the same neighborhood as much as somebody that lives directly across from a neighbor on Green or Howard. So if we could just look at that and see what magic you could put into that, that would be great.
We can certainly look into that.
Great. Anything else? Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public meeting. Thank you very much. And thank you for the comments and the input from the public. We do appreciate it. Okay, now we're going to go ahead and move on to consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be acted upon by one motion unless a council member requests separate action on a specific item. Does anybody want to pull any items?
Yes.
Okay.
Ten H and ten J, please.
H and J?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Anybody else?
Yes. C, D, and H.
Do we want to go ahead and move the balance, since there's so many of them? Go ahead. Yep. Let's go ahead. Motion to move the balance. We're pulling C, D, and H.
And J.
And J. Thank you. So can I get a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
Second. And roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Chirko?
Yes.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. And then we'll just take these in alphabetical order. So the first one is item C, pulled by Councilmember Bates.
Yes. Madam Mayor, my question really has to do with C3. And I'm just wondering if the city manager and/or the finance director can spend a little bit of time on explaining to us how that position is going to work, where the financing is coming from, and how that relates to the operation that then will be being conducted in the finance department.
Of course. So first of all, I'd like to say that our finance director has done a yeoman's job of keeping the department together. Since his appointment, the department has had 100% turnover. And so obviously anyone will tell you that trying to run a department that's important as the finance department with no staff is incredibly hard. One of the things that also came to light through our most recent audit was a call for more internal controls to ensure that we are making a, we're having a good stewardship of the public dollars. And by creating this position, it actually provides that extra check and balance against what my approval is and also against what the finance director's approval is. And so this allows for us to have that built-in checks and balances, which I think will allow us to be more effective going forward. But we also have a number of what I'll call longer-range goals for our finance department, essentially removing ourselves from being tethered to paper, being able to submit time cards and such electronically like most companies today, and being able to make sure that we are following and inputting all of our, all of our PAs and all of our actual outgoing payments in the correct fashion. And so this is a step that I think will bolster not only the internal operations of the city, but also allow us to ensure the public that we are being mindful of how we protect their dollars. From a, just an operational standpoint, this position will report directly to the finance director and will have, take on a number of those large-scale projects that I mentioned before, such as upgrading our financial system. And I'm sorry, sir, I know there was one more component to your question.
Well, I was just wondering totally how the position was going to be financed with the $86,000, if you could just
Understood, sir. So the $86,000, and Craig, please jump in if, if I get this wrong, is the balance or the increase that we would need in order to meet this standard? So the total position cost, I believe, is $123?
$129.6.
$129.6.
And, and the additional is coming from contingency?
Yes, this is right, sir.
Thank you.
I did have a quick question on that. So it says that it's, we're going to do a budget amendment for fiscal year '21, '22, but there's only four months left in this fiscal year. So is that truly the number we're going to be amending this year's budget on, or is this for future budgets?
I believe that that's going to be the total amount for future budgets. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. So we believe that, obviously, it's going to take us a little time to recruit, and so we don't know whether or not we'll be able to have those positions filled by the time we get to the end of the year. But there is enough salary savings at this moment in order to be able to carry that cost through this budget cycle.
Okay, but we're not, we're not going to see $86,000 out the door in the next four months.
That is correct.
Perfect. Otherwise, I'm applying for the job. Okay.
Move the recommended action.
Okay, let's go ahead. We'll go through these, and then we'll just move all those up. Perfect. Okay, so, next is D, and Councilmember Bates, that's yours.
Yes, D, also, this has to do with kind of an understanding, because we've talked about the new, the contracting for the position, entirely agreed. I think you're on the right page there. But I was just wondering if you could talk a little bit about how those two positions that eventually would be modified, how they might be modified to contribute to the success of the city.
Yes, sir. And I'm sorry, you're speaking about the full-time positions that we currently have in place?
Correct.
Okay.
The two, yes.
Right. So, sir, first of all, I have to take my hat off to our Development Services Director, Mr. Noda. He obviously identified some opportunity for some cost savings and also just some operational ease at the end of the day. The long and the short of it is that by providing this service through a janitorial contract, we free up some of the time that our full-time staff is currently dedicating to that task, which means that, much like Councilmember, or, I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Dobie stated, seeing one of our Public Works maintenance workers out there filling potholes. I like the idea that there would be two out there filling potholes so that we can get them done quickly and so that our residents don't have to experience those going forward. By creating the shift and being able to offload some of those hours, we're able to actually dedicate more to outside the building. And Director Noda has really made it clear that, given the number of projects that we're going to be doing here in the next year, not only CIP projects, but also street projects, we're going to need those extra hands and those extra eyes to be out there keeping an eye on the physical makeup of the city as opposed to whether or not my trash can gets emptied at a certain time, which we can accomplish through a janitorial contract. I'm good.
You good? Okay, next is Item H, and that's Mayor Protem Dobie, and also Councilmember Bates have pulled that. So, I'll let you start.
Okay, thank you.
This is regarding the award of the Los Alamos Street Improvement Project. So, my question is, this seems to be a pretty large undertaking. I don't know that we've ever done this main street at one time. So, what is the project timeline? And is there, what will the slate of projects that will be completed, when are we expecting?
And I'm going to let Director Noda take that one, just given that he's more familiar with the actual time, too.
Okay.
Evening, Mayor, members of the City Council. I'll answer your question, Mayor Protem. So, today, hopefully, if the award, the council awards the contract, we are going to finalize the contract with insurance and business license and all that stuff. So, we're hoping that the start of the construction will be in April, with a timeline to finish at the end of June.
Okay.
I will say, and you made the comment about it being a large package of streets. This is the largest streets program that the city has undertaken in quite some time. And so, also, I will give a lot of credit to the development team for being able to develop a plan that not only hits all neighborhoods throughout the city, they did not focus this work in one particular area, but also the planning process that they put in place in order to make sure that they will be able to accomplish projects in a timely manner and hopefully not impact all of the operations that are going on around it as much by having all of the work done in one place at one time.
Okay, awesome, thank you. You good?
Yep.
Okay, Councilmember Bates?
Mr. City Manager, I think we've talked about schedules of B and C. Yes, sir. And how that, you know, might affect the overall project. And in this case, we think we've got good enough prices that that may not be an issue at this point in time, but it's something we might want to consider in the future. I guess my point on this one is, again, I know we're appropriating $270,000 extra. I know that money isn't coming out of thin air. So, where is that coming from? I'm assuming it's coming from contingency. And if that's the case, we need to have it and let us all know and let the community know where the money is being appropriated from. It's just not appearing.
No, sir, and that is a good note that both myself and the Finance Director are going to work on in the future. The, getting back to just the original question of why, I think it's important for the public to know is that the development team, again, has gone out and when they've been able to negotiate what all, or receive bids that actually provide a good costing or something that we see as a deal that we can take advantage of, the Development Services Team has been able to look around the city and find other projects that they might be able to layer in on top of it, take advantage of that savings that they got during the bidding process, and be able to apply that to these projects that we would have gone out and done a RFP for. So, you're absolutely right. I think there's a savings there. That being said, we do need to highlight where exactly the funding is coming from. Yes, exactly. I will do that going forward.
Thank you.
Okay, good. And I just had a quick question. I'm going to sound like a broken record to our City Manager, but I noticed that Bennington was not on this list.
Yes.
Antim and Kearsedge and Siboney, they're great. I've taken many bike rides around there. On Bennington, it's a cut-through street. I feel like I'm on a motocross track as opposed to the other streets. There's weeds growing out of the street, and it's a problem. It is a very heavily, heavily traveled, coming from Siboney and going around Bennington. So, what do I tell my residents?
Yes, that it will be part of the next big package that we do submit to the City Council.
And when's the next big package?
It will be part of this budget cycle. So, it will be approved prior to July 1. But we can also, if you'll allow me to talk a little bit with our development team, we can see if there's enough there for a stand-alone project.
If you can get Bennington done, you can do whatever you want. Please.
I'm going to ask the City Clerk to make a note of that.
There you go. There will be donuts, I might even say, go Gonzaga on that one.
Well, that's worth it by itself.
Okay, yeah, if we could just look at that. I just do get a lot of residents in New Dutch saying, please, please, please do Bennington. So, perfect, thank you. And then the final one is Item J, Mayor Protem Dobie.
Jeez, this is for the bid for the catch basin citywide project. So, staff has commented on the current surge in commodity prices. Everybody knows that everything is going up. Is there a certain percentage that we should be anticipating?
I know that generally that we are operating under a general rule of 25%, but I'm going to, again, ask Director Noda to speak to this simply because he has a greater understanding of these prices, having worked with them every day.
Yes, thank you. So, just like City Manager Simmons stated, most of our procurement for supplies is around 20% to 25% of what maybe we've done at pre-COVID time. But there are some extreme cases. So, our engineering firm, Willdan, that we contract out with, has stated to us that there are certain projects that they work for in other cities that, one example they gave is an access ramp, or each access ramp was deemed for $5,000, but the bid package was coming in at $15,000. So, you're looking at a huge price increase. So, you know, again, part of the process is we go out to bid, the RFP process, and then we try to go out and get the lowest price, and then we'll analyze that price. And then, just like we did with our street improvement project, we try to add on certain things or kind of take a look at things. There's a strategic plan when we do the RFP, what type of equipment we're coming in or supplies we're coming in. So, we're trying to get the lowest prices possible. But yes, because of some inflation and COVID and aftermath of that, you're looking anywhere from 20%, 25% plus.
Okay, so, just to clarify, because I'm not a shop-by-price person, I've learned that you cannot solely shop off of price. There is some consideration given to the quality of what we're purchasing. Because I think we all know, if you spend less money, sometimes you spend more money because you've got to go back and do it again because you paid significantly less. How much are we able to consider that?
I am, I have to abide by the Public Work Code. The Public Work Code differs from the rest of the procurement code. So, unfortunately, I have to go with the lowest price.
I'm a good. Michael, you might have to stop me.
Yeah, there's, I mean, there is a little bit of nuance there that it's the lowest responsible bidder. So, the assumption is that anyone who's qualified to do the work in submitting bids is in the process. And from that point, you go with the lowest bid that's submitted. So, you know, you wouldn't be forced, you wouldn't be forced to select someone who you thought was incapable of doing the work solely because they gave a bottom-floor price. It would have to be someone who has met all the qualifications listed in our bid documents and that who we vetted and determined is capable of actually doing the work that they're bidding on.
And they have, a lower, okay.
And they're the lowest.
I got scared, did y'all see that?
Yeah.
Really nervous, heart, everything. Okay, okay.
The difference between an RFP and a bid. Yeah, no emotion on a bid. Okay.
I'll move C, D, H, and J.
Okay, I think you have a motion to move C, D, H, and J.
Second.
Second.
All right, roll call vote, please.
Motion by Councilmember Bates, seconded by Mayor Protem Dobie. Roll call in Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes, and we'll be moving on to the discussion items. First one is the Southern California Association of Governments, SCAG, 2022 Regional Conference and General Assembly to be held this coming May. And City Clerk, you're up.
Thank you. So, we, as you mentioned, it's the 2022 Regional Conference. It will be held this year in person at the Desert Springs Resort in Palm Desert. That's where it was previously held pre-COVID. The portion that we are designating a representative to is the General Assembly, which is held the second day of the conference. The city's voting delegate is, I don't, comp isn't the right word, but they, their room for the night is paid for as the city's voting delegate. If by chance the voting delegate isn't able to attend, then we would need an alternate in order to still have the room comped through the conference. And to date, Councilmember Bates has expressed an interest in attending. And then the council may appoint a delegate and an alternate.
Okay. Do I have, besides Councilmember Bates, anybody interested in the SCAG conference?
I'll be an alternate.
Sure.
That's why you should be here.
I'm good either, I'm good either way. I can be the alternate, or Jordan, if you said, if you said you were willing, that's fine with me as well.
Oh, he says I sound like a man.
Yeah. Actually, Mark, that was Tanya that said she'd be willing.
Ah, okay. Okay with me, go for it, Tanya.
All right, and Ron, you're still good?
Good, yeah.
To go to SCAG? Okay, do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
Okay, so, can I get a motion to approve Councilmember Bates as the voting delegate with an alternate as Mayor Protem Dobie, please?
I'll make a motion.
Thank you. And I'll go ahead and second it for the silence. And roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Dobie?
Yes.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Yes.
All right. So, you were set for SCAG, good job.
Good.
Okay, the next item is the appointment for Los Alamos Community Foundation. And I believe this is Director Noda.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, and members of the City Council. Tonight, we are recommending to appoint two members of the City Council to sit on the Board of the Los Alamos Community Foundation. At the November 15 Council meeting, council voted to name the community foundation and also propose the recommendations in regards to board members, including a maximum amount of nine total voting board members, five representing the city districts, two members representing business community, and two City Council members. So, I'd like to open it up for nominations.
Okay. I'll go ahead and open it up to the council for two members from the City Council?
I understood that maybe the mayor and the Mayor Protem might be interested in serving.
It works for me. Is that something you're interested? Is there any other interest?
I'd be willing to, but...
Okay.
I'm also, I'm also willing.
All right.
A lot of willing people.
Willing people. How do we do this? Or four people first?
Well, there's willing, but who wants to do it? Like, can we just do that? Chirco, do you want to do it? Or you would just do it if nobody else will?
I want to do it. I'll do, I'll do this one.
Okay.
If it's okay with everyone else.
That's perfect, so there's one. Jordan, do you want to do it? Or you would just do it if nobody else will?
Well, I would want to do it, yes.
Bam. There it is. Let me run meetings.
Who else wants to do it?
You also, oh, logic. Now, we have to have a wrestling match?
Right.
Out front. Chirco's not here, so Jordan is, you and Mayor.
So, how do we best do this?
Paul Stroud?
Somebody put a motion on the floor.
Rock, paper, scissors? Madam Clerk, I would think that it's a, someone puts a motion on the floor for nominating a slate or one individual member? And then look for a second?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, so, I'll entertain motions for a slate or individual that want to do this? Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion. I don't quite understand what we're about to do, but yes.
What are we getting a motion for?
It's my motion. Well, how do you do that with three? Like, do we do, is it like secret squirrel? Where we write the names down and...
We don't do secret ballots.
No.
Okay, well, can I, I will nominate, then, Mayor Hasselbrink and Councilmember Chirco. Is it, can I do that?
Yes, you can.
All right.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Then we roll call vote?
Well, we have the, oh, more nominations?
Rules of order, you take the motions as they come in, so that was our first one. If it fails, we would do a second motion.
Okay. So we'll go ahead and do a roll call vote on nomination for myself and Councilmember Chirco to serve on the community foundation. Roll call vote, please.
Roll call, Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Chirco?
Yes.
Councilmember Nofolda?
Sure, yes.
I didn't know if I'm serving with Mark again, but that's okay.
I beg you to ask for this.
I know, I know, I know, I know. Okay, so we're taking care of on that. Anything else we need to do on this item?
I just have one more request. If we can have a representative suggested from each council member, if you can email me the representative that you have hopefully spoken to and has agreed to serve as a representative of your district, so that I can get their information, have them fill out the application, and invite them to the first foundation meeting here at the council chambers on Monday, March 14th at 6:00 PM.
I have a question.
Yes.
And the answer, it might be no. Michael, you'll have to tell me. Is there, like, you know, say that all my friends from District 1 have moved away. Is there a way for me to say, well, I'll do it, but not in any official capacity?
No, typically, you can't serve into distinct roles in that sense.
Well, no, I wouldn't be the council person. I would just be, you know, regular.
But, but you are a current council member, so we, we could look at it, but my understanding is, yeah, you're, you're wearing your council member hat while you're serving on the council.
Okay. And understanding that volunteers are sort of hard to, to come by these days, it's not imperative that they, you have a selected representative by that meeting, it's just a request.
Got it. Yeah, we're, we're starting to want to mimic the districts that the councils are in to make sure that there's fair representation for, for all, all the representatives. Okay, so next up is the update to the Los Alamos Urban Forest Program, and that is Director Noda.
All right. Good evening. Thank you. I gave you a printout, just in case you can't see it over the screen, of the PowerPoint presentation. So tonight, we're going to ask to discuss the urban forest program, and there's three tiers to that program, so we would like council to provide feedback to staff on tier one, the Los Alamos Tree Policy, an update to that. Tier two, the Los Alamos Tree Dedication Memorial Program, and of course, the tier three is to see if we want to proceed with going through distinction to be a Tree City USA. So City Council adopted the Parkway Tree Program in the late 1990s, and the proposed urban forest program, again, is a three-tiered approach to discuss and update what we currently have. So the first one, of course, is a tree policy, and the tree policy, again, provide guidelines and procedures for tree cutting, tree trimming, and care of the trees that belongs to the city, which includes the public right-of-way trees, or what we call the Parkway Trees. Tier two, again, is a tree dedication memorial, which is a dedication memorial that, it puts it in black and white writing. We don't have anything formalized, and so along the years that I've been here, we've had, like, trees being dedicated, or park benches being dedicated. We're actually formalizing it now to something that we actually have in writing for our residents to, again, you know, you know, if they have a lost one, a lost loved one, they could dedicate a tree to them. And again, we're going to go through the steps of how to become a Tree City USA. So the first one here is a tree policy. So it's a toolkit, a tree toolkit for Los Alamos. There are several reasons why we want to have an urban forest, and of course, there are environmental benefits, as you can see there, which includes, let me look at my paper here, air filtration, embracing natural resources, of course, shade and temper control, and of course, reduction of sound. It also has social benefits and also economic benefits, right? And so having a urban forest is important for our community, and so what, as you are aware, council, ever since I came over to Development Services, I never thought, well, one, I'll be honest with you, I never thought I'd become a trash guru. Secondly, I'm becoming a tree guru now, right? And so we have a lot of residents calling in to talk about trees, whether it's trimming or, you know, again, taking down a tree. So again, when I came over, and just like all the other departments are doing, and I know City Manager Simmons has stated, we're taking a look at all our policies and kind of updating it as, as along we go. So again, to maintain an urban forest, policy must be managed and executed, again, giving staff what I like to call black and white guidelines on how to do things properly. Okay? So part of that there, here, again, is the city has approximately 2,500 trees in the city. There's a lot of different trees that we have in the city, and again, the goal is to establish clear and specific guidelines, what I call, again, black and white. Plant and maintain an urban forest that reflects the community character. We have to have a budget and maintain the urban forest cost effectively. Maintain trees to promote health, life of trees, health for our citizens, and of course, the health of the tree itself. Create and promote a mixed-tree type population, and provide residents with a variety of options. So let's go into the first one here, planting. Here are some of the guidelines here. So we're offering that one tree will be given per property to front, a street frontage. A tree planted shall be 15 gallons in size with a minimum height of six feet. If a resident desires a tree larger than 15 gallons, because we've had residents say, no, I don't want the 15 gallons, I'd like a 24-gallon tree, you don't, you can't even imagine the price difference of that. And so we would ask that the resident will be required to pay the difference in pricing. And yes, we have had residents agree to pay the difference in pricing. And then, and then, at the same time, we would drop off, we have a tree care door hanger that will assist in the direction of care. There are some in the past that I've been told that we plant a new tree, they forget to water the tree, and so the tree dies within four to six weeks. So it's very important, when you plant a new tree, you have to water it at least twice a week. So we give them instructions on how to care for their tree. And of course, we have a, a list of approved trees that can be found on the city website. We contract with West Coast Arborist, and West Coast Arborist has a tree arborist, a tree professional, and so we work with them to come up with this list for the city. We also encounter trimmings. So I don't know if the public knows, but all our trees that belong to the city are trimmed on a rotational cycle. It's every three years. We do it in phases. Trees are trimmed, and we will go out there and trim a tree if a tree overhangs over sidewalk less than nine feet, or over a street, less than 16 feet. So our Public Works Division will go out there and trim trees. And then we also have tree trimming standards there, so we're going to develop a permit system for residents, or if a resident hires a licensed contractor to trim a tree, they need authorization from the city to trim a tree that belongs to the city. Again, if the tree is in the parkway, or we call the public right-of-way, that's a city-owned tree. If it's in their private property, they could trim that whenever they wish. And then trees will not, will be, will not be trimmed off-cycle due to complaint of leaves, dropped pods, flowers, or animals inhabiting the tree. So we do get a lot of complaints from residents that say, hey, I got a tree limb that hangs over my car, I'm kind of tired of the pods, you know, dropping on my car. And so, again, we're putting in guidelines that we don't go out there and trim a tree just because they're dropping leaves or dropping pods on your car. Okay? Removal policy, right? The city will remove parkway trees under the fallen condition. If the tree is determined to be hazard, including danger of falling or large limbs dropping, the tree is dead or diseased as determined by a qualified and licensed expert. Again, that is through our contract with West Coast Arborist. The tree has caused recurring, and I underline recurring, damage to public curb, gutters, or sidewalk, and root pruning is not reasonable. The reason why I underline recurring is there are other methods to resolve an issue, right? So one issue that's very common is a tree root will come and lift a sidewalk. We, our Public Works Division goes out there and determine, and sometimes we just have to grind the sidewalk down to make it safe. We're not going to just, how you call, take, take out a healthy tree just because it raises sidewalk by half an inch or so. We'll grind that down. So again, if it recurs over and over, again, we are trying to be prudent with our time and of course, our labor force. And so then, at that, at that moment, the Public Works Division, along with our contractor, West Coast Arborist, would determine if it's better to remove that tree after recurring issues. Right? And then, let's see where we're at. And of course, if the tree has damaged private property, right, the tree damaged private property, then we'll go in there and take the tree out. The city will not remove parkway trees for the fallen condition. Again, just like the trimmings, we will not remove a tree if it drops leaves, pods, flowers, if it inhabits animals such as birds, squirrels, or non-invasive insects. The roots are coming in the surface in the front yard or parkway. If the tree roots have damaged private plants, paving, or concrete constructed in the parkway. The parkway, again, I want to remind council, is, it's property of the city. And so, yes, the city will allow someone to go in there and plant their own plants, but if a tree, let's say, damaged those plants, or, you know, you put DG surfacing in there and damages that, again, that's the city property, and, you know, we're not going to remove a tree because it just altered your landscaping a little bit. The roots prevent other landscape to grow in the parkway, or, again, the tree is not determined a hazard or life-threatening. Okay? So any questions so far on the tree policy? Any discussions? Yes, ma'am.
So on the trimming, and this is just because, usually I try to listen to this as a resident, now I understand I can never take my council hat off. Okay, I'll abide that, I'm not a hat person. But the, if a resident calls in and are like, there's these certain flowers that if they drop on your car, they begin to affect your paint. So if they were like, yo, I get it, you're not going to come out and trim it, can they trim it?
Yes, and they have to apply for a permit.
They have to apply for a permit, and then they can trim it?
We go out there and see, yes, and then we'll provide them, or their licensed contractor instruction on it. Because there's a way to trim a tree called topping a tree. We will not allow them to top a tree.
Okay. But they can, they, there is recourse, it's just not, nope, you go out to find somewhere else to park.
No.
Cool, I wanted to know that. And then my second question is, because you elaborated on recurring, but I'm looking for more, you have a number in mind? Like, how many recurrences are there that someone can call you? Say they call you, is it three? Is it six? Is it, she got a number in mind?
No, I don't have a number in mind. Recurring yet, though, no.
Okay, so it's like a case-by-case, maybe? Yeah?
Those will be evaluated on a case-by-case basis.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Bates?
Sure. So I think by and large, we are doing a, a good job with trees in the neighborhoods. We do know that some people, because I think, as the Mayor Protem has mentioned, are having problems with trees and just don't want them there, and do their damnedest to get rid of them, whether it's not watering them, poisoning them, et cetera. And I guess my thinking is, and I hope we can concentrate on this, is to really reduce the time between removal of a tree, which may be very legitimate, and planting that new tree, and doing whatever sidewalk work needs to be done. So I know in our neighborhood, we've had a couple cases where that's gone on three, four months before that new tree has been put in. So I would hope there would be something that could be done ahead of time where, hey, resident, yeah, we'll, we'll consider taking out that tree, but you, we want you to select a new replacement from that before we take out the old tree, and then do it almost simultaneously, so there's no question that they're hoping the city's going to forget about it, because I really didn't want that tree there anyway. We want that tree there, and we want to have an urban forest for our community, and I think that's our policy. So that would be my one pitch, is we try to do a better job at coordinating that. Upset, thank you.
So next, on to the.
Yes, so we're going to go to the Tree Dedication Memorial Program. I like to call it a gift that lives.
I like that.
So again, we're just putting it, again, in a policy or guideline that if someone wanted to dedicate a tree or a memorial of some sort to a lost, a lost loved one that recently, or whatever, whatever, a lost loved one, then this is an option for them to do it, right? So again, a tree can be selected from the city-approved tree list. An option to include a plaque in a small prefabricated canister for flowers can be included in the purchase, and the bronze plaque dimensions are, as you can see there, four by eight, and of course, set in a six by 10 concrete base. The cost of the tree, plaque, plus parts and labor would be what the cost of that year, you know? So we, we would do a math calculation, a methodology to figure the fair market value. The location of Tree Dedication Memorial will be exclusive to city parks only, right? So it's not like you could say, hey, I want to put a, a Tree Dedication Memorial in the median. We, we wouldn't allow that. It'd be exclusive to the park. The formal request of a T, a Tree Dedication Memorial would require an application, proof of residency either by the resident or business, and of course, complete payment upfront. And then, at that time, we'll determine the timeline. So this kind of piggybacks on what Councilmember Bates said is, sometimes, especially in this time, procuring a tree takes a little bit of time, especially if you get a, right now, we're working with one, we're trying to find a tree, and it's kind of hard to find right now, due to, you know, demand. So we wouldn't start a project until we would get the tree in our yard and, and ready to go. So this would be the same case here. Ceremonies may take place, a large gathering, informal attendance, if they want to do something special when this tree goes up. But again, this is allowed, but will need to be communicated to the city. And then, in event of necessary removal due to park development, or any other hazard, or like the death of a tree in future years, the city will attempt to notify the person on the application, but reserves the right to execute without any, without the person's consent. So again, I think this is a nice thing. Again, we'll formalize it, and again, black and white. We've done some since I've been here in, in the Recreation Department, but it's nothing formalized, so this just formalizes a, a, something for our residents if they want to go down this road. Okay? Any questions?
Any questions?
Okay.
Just a quick, real quick question for that. Does the resident get to pick the park, or do they just say, I'm interested in the city?
We would love that. We, my big thing is, we offer customer service, so yes, we would communicate with them on their preference of a park, but at the end of the day, if everyone chooses, let's say, a tiny park, you know, because some of our parks are basically a parcel lot, you know, we have to communicate, and it's like, I'm sorry, we just can't put a hundred trees at, like, Seroptemus Park.
But if there's room, they can request which park.
Absolutely.
Okay, all right.
The last one here we're going to talk about is Tree City USA. We want to celebrate our urban forestry, so there's four steps to become recognized as Tree City USA. A lot of it, you know, when I first went into this, we thought that you had to have a certain number of trees to become a Tree City USA. There's no stipulation that actually says that. That's, that's kind of interesting. But number one is establish a tree board. The report is stating that we would like to keep that internal and have that a city staff, tree board committee to evaluate, to, again, talk about trees and make sure that we're doing everything according to the standards of becoming a Tree City USA. Adoption of tree ordinance, again, if this, if council direct staff, we will come back at next month's meeting with an ordinance to, again, you know, comply with the, the regulations of Tree City USA. A budget, so the budget is $2 per capita, so we roughly have a little bit less than 12,000 residents in the city, so you're looking at a $24,000 budget annually, which we exceed, because this past year I had a $70,000 tree planting budget, so that shouldn't be an issue. And then, of course, we have to do an Arbor Day celebration around Arbor Day, which is scheduled for, I believe, the end of April, I believe. It's the fourth, like, Friday or Saturday in April. So we would do something to celebrate and inform our residents about urban forestry and nature, and, and the importance of trees, and et cetera. Okay? Any questions on the Tree City USA distinction?
Anybody up here? Sounds cool.
Okay. So again, I'd like some feedback, recommendations, if any, and if not, then next month, we'll come back with a tree ordinance, and then, again, we will include the, the budget. Like I said, I already include that in our budget for this year, in our tree planting, and so we meet that capita already, but any, I've taken note on Councilmember Bates's suggestion, and we can definitely add that, but any other suggestion is greatly appreciated.
What kind of trees?
There's many trees that the city offers.
There's like 15.
Are any of them little cottonwood? I haven't looked at the list yet, forgive me. That's what Los Alamos means, I learned that on the tour of the joint first tram base. It means little cottonwoods. Are we getting little cottonwood trees?
So no, we do not offer little cottonwood. One of the trees. We can, as a staff, and so that is one of the things that I talk with our Public Works Division about planting ourselves, but little cottonwoods, they grow very big, and they have some shedding issues, and so we don't recommend putting that in a public right-of-way.
Okay.
But if we go out to, like, we have one at Cottonwood Park, but we could add maybe a second one or a third one there.
No, they have them on the base, I was just, you know.
Yeah.
We are little cottonwoods, so little cottonwood.
They just, they just take up a lot of space when they become fully mature.
Okay. All right.
Deceptively. And then, will you also, in the next meeting, have some sort of, for the tree dedication, what's the financial around it? I know you can't be exact based on what tree they're picking and things, so is it $25? Is it $5,000?
Yes.
You know, that type of thing?
Yes, we'll have that.
Jesus.
We'll have, we'll, we'll have estimates for you.
Okay, perfect.
I did want to point out just one thing, that at, at the end of the day, this item was originally brought forward, or mentioned to me by Councilman Chirco, and the overriding goal here, too, is to increase the number of trees that we have in town. I think that the residents were commenting about, you know, what exactly makes Los Alamos a special place, and trees obviously have the ability to build communities, to provide shade, but also create beautiful streetscapes for us to actually drive down. So again, while we do currently sit right around, you know, 2,500 trees, our goal is to dramatically increase that, so the budget will reflect that as we go forward.
Okay. And then just on a timeline to be Tree City USA, we've established the board, we've gotten the ordinance, that's two readings, got the budget, we celebrate in April. When do we actually get that designation?
There's a formal application process, and I'm not quite sure how long it takes, but.
Deadline's at the end of the year.
Okay, the deadline's at the end of the year, and so, we will definitely get it in there, but our goal is to, by next, by the end of next fiscal year, we have the Tree City USA designation, and then, along with that, you could purchase signs that we should put up to mark that. So that's it, that's our goal, is of, is coming next fiscal year.
Perfect. All right, and I think you were.
I don't know if we need a recommendation or not, but the, there are four items under recommendations. I think we've discussed all of them. I don't know if you need a motion or not.
No, as council is only providing feedback, we don't need a motion at this time.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so then we are on to item D, additional waste hauler service options and transition dates. Director Noda, you're busy tonight.
Yes. So I'll just give a few minutes while we upload the PowerPoint presentation. Again, you have a printout in front for you, in front of you. So as council's aware, back at the late, last year, the city went out to, well, let's go back even further than that, around mid-year last year, around June or July, the city went out to RFP for our trash services, because we knew that our contract with Republic Services was going to expire December 31st of 2021. We went through, we got a review committee, went through the whole RFP process, and in October, we awarded the trash contract to Universal Waste Systems. So Universal Waste System, just a reminder, is a family-owned, private-held company established in 1986. They operate in three states, California, Arizona, and New Mexico, and I just put there our contacts, so any viewers at home wanted to get their phone number, but you can follow them on all the social media accounts. There's a telephone number there and everything for Universal Waste. So during that time, when we awarded it, so typically, we started our transition from Republic Services bin to Universal Waste bin in January and February. We just recently completed that, and so, as you can see there, we had about 1,900 accounts, residential, 20 industrial accounts, 650 approximately accounts for commercial, for a total of 2,630 accounts. Usually, when you go through this, I've been told that your transition usually takes about five or six months. five or six months. Universal Waste accomplished this in six weeks. So they were very fast and timely, and we knew because of the fast, the fastness, or the short timeframe, that there were going to be some hiccups along the way, but the timeliness of addressing this issue from Universal Waste with support from city staff, I thought went very well during the six-week period. Okay? So during the transition period, we, some of our, especially our business sector, or what we call our commercial sector, wanted some different, some additional options, right? So I wanted to list here, so that for our residential, which we also call single-family residential, or SFR, we offer a 35-gallon cart, a 65-gallon cart, and 96-gallon cart. I want to remind everyone that a single-family resident includes multifamily property with four or less units, all right? Again, during the transition, the commercial sector requested additional options, which was a 96-gallon cart and two-yard bin, so that's what's in the report today, was a rate establishment for that, because during the RFP process, we didn't, Universal Waste did not provide us those rate options, and the reason why was, it was not included in our RFP. Again, during the transition period, our commercial sector requested that, so working with Universal Waste, we got those options again, a 96-gallon cart, two-yard bin, along with the three-yard bin and four-yard bin. And again, a commercial account are also multifamily properties with five or more units. I want to add here, at the very bottom, it says the fees. The 96-gallon, two-yard bins, it was analyzed by our consultant, Mike Valier, and the fees falls within the lowest tier of prices that were received during the RFP process. So I want to remind everyone that these were the proposed rates that were given to us, and this was presented at council at October, at the October 11th, 2021 meeting, and as you can see there, this is not the, there's some added fees and everything like that, but these are the baseline rates, the base rates. But as you can see there, the residential three-cart rates, I'm just gonna, I'm not going to go over every single one, but Universal Waste proposed 1,295. Again, I want to state that there are some additional fees, I believe the additional fees comes up to around $14 for a single-family resident, and if we stayed with Republic, Republic was proposing at the time, rates at 1,998 or $20, so their fees were going to go up, okay? There's many, 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 in terms of the commercial sector's options, you could have a three-yard bin for one-time-a-week pickup, you could have a three-yard bin for three times-a-week pickup, you could have a five-day-a-week pickup. So again, we just cut, we just took one, and we use it as a baseline data, so right there's the commercial gray, which is a three-yard bin at one week, one time-a-week pickup. Again, the baseline rate is 1,35. If we stayed with Republic, their rate was going to go up to $180.45. So we have gotten some phone calls from residents saying, why didn't we stay with Republic? I was paying cheaper for Republic. And the reason why, and I'm gonna get into it, is because of Senate Bill 1383, and I'll get into that in a second. But again, Universal Waste provides the best blends of price, service, and satisfying the Senate Bill 1383 mandate. So I just want to add that, what does that mean, service? So a lot of the cities in California is going to a three-cart system, so that means one cart will be for trash, the second cart will be for recycling, and the third cart will be for organic waste, your food waste. Because we went with Universal Waste System, we are keeping, and you won't see, the single-family residents will see no changes, because you can meet, you could mix your organic waste with your regular trash. So you're going to have one bin for your trash and your organics, your second bin for your recycling, and you keep the third bin, which is for your green waste. Senate Bill 1383 is requiring that even the commercial sector gets all three bins as well, okay? So for many years, commercial sector only had one bin for everything. Now you have to have one for, again, for trash, for organics, and for your recycling. So because of Universal Waste and the system that they have, they're only going to have a two-cart system, so you can mix your organics with your trash, and then your recycling bin, okay? Again, I want to remind everyone, this is Senate Bill 1383, it is a state mandate, and as you can see in the timeline, that it was adopted in September of 2016. It took two years to kind of, for the state to hash out the rulemaking, and then, the regulations was adopted in the fall of 2020, with a goal of January 1st, 2022, to, for regulation to take effect, and the state enforcement began. State enforcement is usually done by the organization called CalRecycle, and then, of course, we have a couple years to kind of implement everything that is, again, mandated by Senate Bill 1383, with a January 1, 2024, where now the city has to take enforcement to make sure that all that's met, and that is going to be done by mainly our code enforcement division, with a goal that the state has put down, again, and you can see there, January 1, 2025, with a 75% reduction in organic waste. So real quick, why is the state kind of taking a hard look at organic waste? It's because organic waste is the biggest producer of methane gas in the landfills, and methane gas is deemed as very hazardous to climate change in the state of California. So right now, over 50% of the landfill are filled with organic waste, so that's why the Senate Bill 1383 is tackling the methane gas, methane gas production by trying to reduce that, again, with a goal in mind of January 1, 2025, with a 75% reduction. So what are responsibilities of the city of Los Alamos? The first box is provide organic collection service to all resident businesses. We are, done that with Universal Waste Services. Establish an edible food recovery program, we have done that. We have partnered with a local nonprofit called Food Finders to do so. Conduct education outreach to communities. We are in the process of that, so we can check that box, we're going to continue that as the year goes on. Procure recycled, recycled and recovered organic procedure, I have a next slide on that, but it's a city policy that is coming. Secure access to recycling and edible food recovery capacity, again, we're partnering with nonprofits, we're checking that box, and again, monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. Again, our code division is taking a big step in that, and they are in the process of getting that underway. Upcoming, again, we procure recycling and organic products, it's a city policy on the use and procurement of recovered organic waste and recycled products, including compost, mulch, renewable gas, and paper. So this will be coming, the next few slides will be talking about some upcoming trash-related items, so we're going to have that policy. We've kind of already started that policy, when we buy paper, or envelope, or cardboard boxes, we have to have a certain percentage that is recyclable material. We've already started that process late last fall. Okay? The next one we're going to talk about here is a service day change, right? I have the map here, so everything, and this is, we're talking about the single-family or residential, right? Currently, right now, everything in the city, in terms of residential, it's on Thursday, we're going to change it to Friday. Those are the neighborhoods, Old Town West, Old Town East, Apartment Row, Carrier Row, New Dutch Haven. Please visit the city's website to view the complete list of addresses that will be affected. The reason why we're doing that is, now we have two days of Universal Waste in the city. Because we have two days, it's more serviced, and also, it's done more efficiently to collect the waste, and also, this will tremendously assist us with our bulky item cleanup. Okay? Another upcoming thing is recycling bins. Again, I mentioned that all commercial, again, because of Senate Bill 1383 mandates, that all commercial properties have to have a trash bin and a recycling bin, that will be pushed out in June or July of this year. So unfortunately, because you have a second bin coming, the commercial sector will see a price increase that's applied to that as well. So we're, we're starting to do outreach, we had, I can't remember, a week or two weeks ago, our first workshop, talking about this, and we will continue to do this as we move forward, our June-July push-out date.
Ron, I had a quick question about that, with them getting a second bin, what about those businesses, like Starbucks over here, they actually have a concrete enclosure that houses their bins to the inch? Now what?
So, this is right here, there's a couple ways to do, you could do a service audit, so Universal Waste will send representatives out there to do a service audit, or our consultant, Mike Valier, will do also a consultant, and maybe you don't need that big of a bin, you might need a smaller bin to kind of, again, meet that, or we also have a waiver, which is a space constraint waiver that they can apply for, and go through the process with the city.
So we're not going to force them to reconstruct their locked bin area?
We're going to try our best, correct?
Okay.
Okay? So again, we have our audits that I have, that I stated here. Again, you know, the last week, or several weeks, actually, we have some commercial businesses expressing concerns of increased rates. So again, I was just talking to a nonprofit today, and I tried to tell them, please do an audit, because this nonprofit has a, I believe, a four-yard bin with two times-a-week pickup, and I said, you might not need a four-yard bin, you might only need a two-yard bin, and it might be only a one-time pickup. So again, the audit will go out there and analyze your need and tailor the need for you to help reduce the cost as much as possible. But again, this is something that we have to do, this is not Universal Waste imposing, or the city of Los Alamos is imposing, it's a Senate bill that the state is imposing that we have to do to meet the, again, 1383 mandate. And again, we're going to, from here, we already started with our workshop, like I said, a week or two weeks ago, and continuing for this year, and of course, into next year, we're going to do outreach, which includes mailers, we're working on a citywide mailer right now, to go out there, and it's not just a one-page mailer, it's like, three or four pages, and it's going to talk about, you know, what services Universal Waste is offering, again, education material on Senate Bill 1383, which talk about, commercial sector, they want to do a space constraint waiver, et cetera. Social media, email blast, website, and of course, we're going to have our crew out there at city special event, again, trying to educate and do outreach as much as possible. Okay, I put our city's phone number, Universal Waste phone number and website on there, in case you have, will have any question. I urge anyone to reach out to us, and we'll try our best to work with you to, again, meet the Senate Bill 1383 mandate. Okay? Any questions?
Yeah.
Councilmember Eretta?
No, thank you.
Snap, Bates!
Couple things, Ron. First, I guess I would say that I think it's important, certainly for us to move, you know, good old state, the program isn't bad, no funding, state mandate, our businesses and our residents get nailed, and it's just a pattern, and it's very unfortunate. My point being here is, certainly, we'd like to have all this done tomorrow, but if we work with a particular, especially nonprofit, who's having a little difficulty switching over because there may be an increased cost, I guess my point would be, is before we really get any hardcore enforcement, we're talking about 23 or 24, so I wouldn't be out there pushing these businesses if it's really going to impact their bottom line to make the switch as of this moment. So that would be my first comment. My second comment is this, I think it's important for the community and the businesses to know that the rates we've come up with, and we're being asked to approve tonight, are very consistent with the lowest rates available pretty much anywhere in Orange County, especially when 1383 is considered. So these aren't new rates we're putting in, these are taken from our low rates that were already established, and they're just being incrementally introduced as requested by the businesses, and they're still very low competitive rates compared to any other organization or city around us. So that's, those are the comments I wanted to make, thank you.
I just had a quick one, in the interest of being overwhelmed by information, although I do understand why you have to offer it, is there a way to kind of meet both types of parties? Like, you have bullet points and then links? So, because I could look at it, I already have a recycle bin at my business, so I'm not, like, I'm not as worried about it. So it's like, okay, here are the changes that are coming, click here if you need more information, and then you have the additional information. Is there a way to do that? Because what I've noticed, in my very limited experience, is that when it's a bunch of information, you either skim it, or you don't look at it at all.
You're right. Yes, you know, we use a lot, CalRecycle does a great job with a lot of information, so we, if you go check out our city's website, we have our own information on there, but we also have links for additional information, and also, we have quick links to the Universal Waste website as well, and they have additional information as well, so is that what?
Oh, their website, have we talked to them about, have you been on their website?
I have, yes.
Maybe I got the wrong link, but their website is interesting.
How so?
It's not very user-friendly, I've had to call.
Yeah.
Like, I cannot facilitate what I need simply by, it's more like a landing page, it's not really like a website.
Okay.
And that's not any, like, it's just a...
Yeah, I'll have a conversation with them about that, yes. We'll try to correct that, as we can, but again...
So I'm not trying to say, like, oh, they need to fix it, it's just, someone who goes to a website and wants to get the information right there, I cannot do that on their website. I have to call them. Now, for some people, like my good friend here, Mr. Bates, he gonna call them anyway, so that works. But for me, who only has about two minutes to make a phone call, it's just, you know, trying to close those gaps, so that, I don't think it would be a hard thing for them to just link.
Yeah, can I get clarification, are you trying to ask for service, or are you asking for information in regards of like, you know, what to dump in a trash can, or recycle?
It's service information, like, I, one of my people lost my lock, and I just wanted to log in, like, yo, can you just get rid of my lock? Or can we, you know, get the, and I had to call them and arrange everything. You cannot go to their website and do like, a service request, or, you know, go through your online portal and say, hey, you can pay! But you can't get any of those questions answered.
Okay.
Anything else?
Uh-uh.
Okay, um, let's see, yeah, so we are going to, oh, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought. For the business outreach, it might be a good idea, I think I've talked to you about this chat, maybe inviting Matt, who I hear is a phenomenal public speaker, to one of the chamber breakfasts.
Of course, actually.
And then also, possibly during the state of the city, have Universal set up something out, outside of the lunch venue, since it's predominantly attended by businesses.
That's a fantastic job, I'll talk to Matt about that.
Yeah, we just did.
Yeah.
He's good to go.
Yeah, that's what I took away from that as well.
Okay, perfect. Okay, so can I get a motion in a second? All right?
Second.
And this is to accept the rate establishment and execute any needed documents to enact the rates. These are not rate changes, these are...
Clarifications?
Increases in services.
Requested in, these are, these new options that we're providing to the business community, were requested by the business community.
There you go.
So we're facilitating that request, and we're able to actually accomplish this at a lower rate than the vast majority of cities out there, given the contract that the council approved last year.
Perfect, what he said. So we have a motion?
Yes.
And a second? All right, roll call vote, please.
Mayor Hasselbrink?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Doby?
Yes.
Councilmember Bates?
Yes.
Councilmember Turca?
Yes.
Councilmember Nefolda?
Yes.
Motion passes, and I am so sorry, Councilman Turca, you didn't have anything to say, did you?